And we're ready.
All right. Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for November 13th, 2024, bill after six o'clock. We're here in City Council Chambers, 345 High Street. Roll call, please.
Moller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
We're going to start off with an offering of prayer by Vice Mayor Eric Pullman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please name if you are able.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Lord, as always, we ask you to watch over our firefighters and police that they may return home safely after each day, plus our veterans and our young men and women that are serving the military currently. We ask this in your name, Lord. Amen.
We have the allegiance to the good God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't believe we have any special presentations this evening, do we?
No, sir.
Okay, so we're going to go right to audience and citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments may do so during this part of the agenda or may wait until that item is up for a vote on the council floor. All individuals who attended address council require to sign this blue public speaking book. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. So we've got Jim Loneman first.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor.
Good evening.
Okay, I saw there's some of these manhole covers, like, you know, the round things where they're sinking down, you can see the cracks in them. Have you seen them like that?
You're talking about the manhole covers?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim, that is a problem. Sometimes it's not necessarily our problem.
The more it's sinking down, the more it's going to burst the road, you know?
Not necessarily our problem, but we do try and get those rectified, taken care of.
Because it's pretty bad. I mean, I mean, I'm, there are some still, still pretty bad ones on High Street and on Main Street, too.
But that, I do see some improvements. We are doing some, some more level type of work. That's not our fault, but I think we're doing the work.
Well, there's some manhole, people, manholes, and they should fix them, not you.
Well, Jim, you're going to see improvement on our streets as the months go by, although not during the winter months. But I think we did a good job with our, our streets here in 2024, and we get grants, we handle our money very well, we've got our own equipment at times to do streets. So we're doing the best we can, and I think it's a lot better now than what it was.
It's a lot better now, I'm saying, but still, it's still got a lot of metal there.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. You can hear me outside, Bob Harris. There he comes. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening. Good evening to council and audience and citizens and anyone else that I left out. This evening, again, I would like to thank the council for the good year that we've had. I think we've had a good run, and we're beginning to turn the corner and make a big difference in our communities. I like that, and I appreciate that 100%. And I want to thank you for all that you've done where Southeast is concerned, Second Ward and the city. It's been a great year for us to look back on in a positive manner. Monday night, we had a community meeting, and one of the things that came up in the community meeting was the baseball field at the community center. Bobby Knight brought it up, and what he was saying is that we need some attention, and we basically need a makeover for that baseball field. I'd like to see the kids walking to the center with their baseball gloves and bats instead of walking around with guns. So we would like for the city to consider doing a makeover on the baseball field, and maybe we can get up a challenge between council and some of the community groups for a softball game. So just fruit for thought, and I'm asking you to take a good look at that and make it happen because we really want to make great things happen in our communities. And with that, looking forward to a good year coming up regardless to what comes before us. I think working together, we can make anything happen and solve just about any problem. So God bless you and thank you, and look forward to seeing you the next time.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Okay, that takes care of audience and citizens. We now go to the consent agenda. That includes items such as staff reports, caucus reports, and the committee of the whole. Committee of the whole is a opportunity for City Council to ask questions, comment on various upcoming projects that are going on in the city, and I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed when the committee of the whole take place.
Second.
Motion, Mayor Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The time is 6:07. Ready, sir?
Our first two presentations on our caucus agenda will be presented by our finance director, Mr. Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens. Tonight, the first caucus agenda, might just hit the... First caucus agenda is the 2025 proposed budget. This is just a very high-level look, one slide tonight. We do have a presentation that we're going to do at the public hearing on, I think it's December 4th. We have a finance committee meeting this Friday in council chambers at 8:00 a.m. It's going to be the infrastructure funds. The following Friday, we're going to have a finance committee meeting, 8:00 a.m. here in council chambers. All those meetings are open to the public. Any input is welcome. Just to give you a brief overview, the current budget, all funds is at $419.7 million. It's up about nine and a half percent from the 2024 budget, which was $383.2 million. Like I said, we're going to get into a lot more detail as we progress through this. I've also got a budget in brief. It's about a six or seven-page document that I'll be sending out in the next day or two to y'all, and that'll summarize a lot more of this and hopefully make it a lot easier for you all to follow and make a decision on where you want to head with it. Do you guys have any questions at all on that?
Questions? Look forward to the finance meetings. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome. The second one, these real estate tax advances, this is just an annual housekeeping item we do every year. The Butler County Auditor requires a resolution by council to let them advance general fund monies to us. They cannot do the levy funds, but they can advance general fund, real estate tax money to us. The purpose is for us to get it in the bank. We can invest that money early. As you can see, Star Ohio's still paying about 4.8%. That's a state-managed fund, and we've got a good portion of our money in there. This rate cut environment we've been going through, we've tried to lock up more money into more of our federal agencies, which we can go out five years, but we still do utilize Star Ohio for our investment purposes, and it just allows us to earn more money as the city. Any questions on that one?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys have a good evening.
Next up for items three and five will be a presentation from our Director of Engineering, Mr. Alan Messer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is our annual assessment, concrete assessment. These are the streets. That will be included in that. You see a lot of streets affecting entirely this program on the east side of the river this year. This is a map of those streets. The number of assessments is considerable because of, you look at the length involved in these, and these are older sections of town. If you remember, one of the things we're doing to reduce the price to our citizens is we started last year with the concrete cutting in lieu of concrete replacement, which is nearly half the price for those that opt into that, and we're constantly looking at other ways to reduce that burden on the citizens. Are there any questions on this?
Thank you.
This is a property transfer similar to what we do with the side lot program. In this case, there's a thin sliver about five foot wide of city-owned property that butts up against the right-of-way on Eaton Avenue. That sliver was created when, you can see in the picture there, there was a, the green in the picture on the left was a house that was there. The city had to buy the entire property because the street went through the house, but we didn't need the entire property for a road right-of-way, so we're transferring that excess property, we'll say, to the adjacent property owner rather than holding on to it and being a useless piece of property for the city. Are there any questions on this one? Thank you.
Next up for item number four will be a presentation by our Executive Director of Neighborhood Services, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. Tonight, this is a memorandum of agreement that we are proposing to enter into with Neighborhood Housing Services to construct new homes at 644 to 654 East Avenue. Ideally, if the plan would be to construct three homes there, and Neighborhood Housing Services does new builds all over Butler County, and their model is to work with low and moderate income families, and these would be for sale to lower-matter-income families. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Member Lauer.
So there's, there are three lots there or two lots?
There are three lots there.
Okay, and we plan on putting two houses? Is that what you said, or three?
I think that, that if all goes to plan, they're still moving pieces. There's another piece of legislation moving through about the middle lot, about land, land transfer, that there would be able, we'd be able to do three homes there.
So we're looking, they're looking to sell these houses. What will be the price range for these houses? I'm excited about that, as you well know, because this is our first step into Jefferson and kind of revamping, revitalizing it, and I'm very excited about this, and I hope that this, you know, I thank you for everything you've done up to this point. The price range, I was just wondering about that.
I think that that is to be determined. They, the goal is for them to be affordable to residents that already live in the neighborhood that want to become homeowners. But this memorandum of agreement is kind of a beginning step to, so that there is a commitment, because there's, there's work to be done to hire architects and do engineering work, that the prep work that you need to do to even get the, the final cost of what it's going to cost to construct these, and then figuring out what they will be sold for. So I don't have that answer.
That's fine. And do you have any ideas, start to finish, when we begin and have these first group of houses completed?
How about as soon as possible? I, I don't know. I feel like everything moves slower than we want it to, but we want to see, I mean, it would be awesome to see some new homes built in 2025, right?
I am excited about it, yes.
Mr. Mayor. Vice Member Ryan.
Liz, thank you. I, you know, I share Councilman Lauer's excitement. This is a good start to something new in Hamilton, especially when it comes to the affordable housing issue. Our residents have been getting quite vocal about this for the last year, year and a half. So I'm excited about this. I think, you know, the best area to start is Jefferson. Really excited to help them out, and hopefully this, this program's really going to take off. When these homes are built and sold, how long does that home, how, how long does that owner have to remain in that home? I guess what I'm trying to say is, is there a lien in such a way placed on this home for a certain amount of time so we can avoid them moving in these nice homes, and two years later renting them out to whoever? Do we have, are we going to have restrictions in place to ensure that this remains owner-occupied as long as it possibly can?
We absolutely can do that. The source of funding, I think, for these first ones will be pretty flexible to allow us to create stipulations, and what I'm, what is common is a five-year period.
Okay.
But there ha, you could go longer, but it is very common to do five-year.
Okay. Is, is that something that Neighborhood Housing is going to put in these contracts when they, when they sign, or is that the conversation we need to have with them?
We would definitely be in conversation with them on that. We, and, and, and there's no doubt that they would, you know, be comfortable with that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Member Lamb.
And Liz, again, I think we all echo without saying too much more, but thank you. What a huge step for the Jefferson community in, again, revitalization, aggregating properties so the homes would be near, next to each other, across the street from each other, similar to what's gone on in Prospect Hill and the former Lincoln School site and things like that. So it's great to have people with a vision and a want to be able to put a stake in the ground and say, this is ours. So again, the creative financing that allows homeowners to be able to purchase these and stay in them for an affordable amount of time is, is part of the equation, and I think the public knows that, that this is going to be a long-term investment. It's not going to be one shot. It's going to be multiple places in the community that have, again, a real, real commitment toward the improvements of the area. Thank you.
Yeah. It'll be really exciting to see new houses be constructed. It'll be really great.
Tomorrow would be good.
Tomorrow, maybe yesterday.
Just a couple of comments. Affordable housing is so important for homeownership, but also for rentals, and I hope we can have some creative deed restrictions to kind of make sure that these first few are truly homeownership. I mean, I think that's how you really start, but our rentals are pretty expensive around here, too. But that's a beautiful home there. And I know that's probably not going to be the way it's going to look, but if you could do something like that, that would be great.
This is, you know, they just sent it to me about 24 hours ago, so I haven't gotten a chance to share it with the city manager yet, but, so surprised. But this is actually one of the designs they sent us. This is actually something that they're proposing as a preliminary. So this could be really what it would look like.
That'd be great.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Member Lamb.
I'm going to piggyback just a little bit, Liz. It's a little bit different, but the scope of the work that's taking place on Front Street, when Bob Harris was in a little while ago, and further continued new development of property along Front Street that's taking place right now is also very exciting for a community that, that looks forward to the rejuvenation of, of what it once was, live, work, and play, and things like that. And it's, it's another exciting piece of, of work that's going on. Those homes along Front Street appear to be probably going to be ready next spring or early summer. So again, as properties are aggregated on purpose, down with some old, not-so-nice properties, and these new homes, new, new places for people to be able to call home are going in on purpose. It's exciting for our city.
Great. Thank you so much for bringing it to us.
Next up for item number six will be a presentation by our Planning Director, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
Good evening. I am here for this particular item, which is a license and maintenance agreement being proposed between the city and Immortal Vibes. It's related to the piece of the public, what I'm going to call the public, like patio. That's at the end cap of the public parking lot there at Main and D Street. So the photo on the right is showing you from the street view. It's the far right side of that patio. The left aerial view is showing you that it's basically going to go from the wall of Immortal Vibes to the right side of that staircase so that public access is maintained. Essentially, they have requested to put their own seating out there and use it like a sidewalk cafe, which we have regulations for sidewalk cafe, but that is related strictly to the right-of-way. And this is a unique situation in that it's this raised patio that sits above the sidewalk. It's not technically in the right-of-way, although it is public property. So after consulting with how to move this forward, what is being proposed is essentially this license and maintenance agreement where essentially they would be charged the same fee that our sidewalk cafe regulation requires, but it would allow them to exclusively use this patio to put out their own furniture and use it for outdoor seating, and they would be responsible to maintain it as part of that. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor. So Lauren, is there going to be a patio cover over it?
Okay. No.
Okay.
At least not that has been proposed at this time. The conversation to this date with Carter Moore, who owns Immortal Vibes, has simply been that they are interested in maintaining that space and having it strictly. There's, because there, there actually are picnic tables out there that the city owns. I think aesthetically, he would like to use something different and have different, a different type of seating. The 513 has an easement agreement on the left side, the west side of that patio, but that was put in place when Core owned that parking lot and that patio. And so that is a recorded easement, essentially granting them the exact same rights that Immortal Vibes is asking for. So that's why the city was approached. Now that we own that parking lot, hey, can we do the same thing as 513? And this is the route that was proposed to essentially do that. Rather than recording an easement, which would be with, say, the property owner, this is specifically with Immortal Vibes, that business only. So we hope he's there for a very, very long time, but should something change or he decide to no longer use that patio, that agreement would be an all-in void, you know, once that business left, and a future business would have to come back to the city to ask to use that same space.
That's perfect. So you just come out the front door and walk up the steps to that patio?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Pullman.
I just have one question on that. Since it is still public, the Dora regulations, I mean, I'm all for it, but is that going to have any, you know, walking out onto the public we're supposed to have?
So he would need to be serving into a Dora cup for his customers to, say, drink out there on that patio because, because that's not his. I imagine, oh, I can, I think, make a very fair assumption that that outdoor space, because it's not his, is not part of the defined boundary of his liquor permit with the state. So he would be serving outside of his permitted area. So he would be serving into Dora cups for his customers to go up onto that patio.
A 513 on the other side doesn't have to do that because they have the easement already, right? Or record it?
Well, it would be dependent on their liquor license with the state and whether or not they claimed that space with their permit application as part of the boundary of their. And I don't know the answer to that.
I would just hate to see an argument, you know, that says
Sure.
they're over there doing it, and we're over here, and we can't do it, and, you know, it's the same. So I, I guess you're all looking into that to make sure it's, and again, I'm all for it. I think it's great that they can do that, but I just worry about, you know, them looking at maybe, I don't know what 513 is doing out there. I never really looked and see if they had Dora cups or there, you know, somebody's out there.
I don't actually know the answer to that question. I'm not, I'm not sure how, how they're, again, since that is through the state, that is not through us locally.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the, the specific boundary of the 513s.
I'm guessing, just saying.
Permit. My guess would be, well, again, I don't want to make assumptions, but if it is the same as Immortal Vibes, that's their patio to use. But if it's not part of their liquor-defined boundary for their permit at the state level, then the 513s customer should also be using a Dora cup on that patio. But I, I don't, I cannot speak with certainty to that.
I know you're going to research it and do that, but it's just, I could see that being a problem if one's doing it and one's not.
Sure.
Okay, and, you know, that's, I get it. I mean, I just want to try to save an argument down the road, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good, very good point. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
And last on our caucus agenda for item number seven will be a presentation by our Neighborhood's Coordinator, Ms. Sarah Silva.
Evening. Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. Hey, Daniel, can you hold this? Thanks. Okay. Good evening. Daniel, thank you. My name is Sarah Silva, and I am the Neighborhood's Coordinator for the City of Hamilton. Mayor Mueller, members of council, and Hamilton neighbors and friends. Tonight, I am honored to share an incredible opportunity that reflects the best of Hamilton: community, inclusion, growth, and creating opportunities for all. The FC Cincinnati Foundation has chose the City of Hamilton for their next mini-pitch project. This will give our youth and families a place to gather, play, and engage. For Hamilton, this project will strengthen our neighborhood and bring residents from other neighborhoods together, creating pride and unity. After exploring other communities and visiting Hamilton three times over the last two years and exploring several different potential locations, the FC Cincinnati Foundation has chosen the open area there, if you can see that, between the Booker T. Washington Community Center and the Riverview Elementary School. Mr. Harris did mention about that baseball field and how he, there to the left of that mini-pitch site, about looking for improvements there, which would be great considering this really cool project is about to go into that grassy space in between Booker T. Washington and the school, which is super exciting. This project is also a testament of our commitment as the city to supporting what matters to our youth, our residents, and our families, acknowledging their love for soccer, and showing that we care about creating opportunities that matter the most to them. The project construction will be completely fully funded by the FC Cincinnati Foundation, and it comes at no cost to the City of Hamilton or our residents. It's a very generous gift that will bring a lasting impact on our community. Our local partners, including the great Miami Valley YMCA, Hamilton City Schools, our Parks Conservancy, the Booker T. Washington Community Center, and our awesome Hamilton Community Foundation will be providing their support through collaboration and resources to, to ensure the success of this pro, this project. Their partnership actually reflects our can-do approach that continues to move Hamilton forward and make our city even better a place to live, work, and play. We're kind of working on an exciting timeline since we just found out last week that we were the potential site for this. Construction could begin as early as December 1st with your approval. Completion by the end of the year, weather permitting. The FC Cincinnati, the FC Cincinnati also plans to bring additional programming and partnerships with other community organizations like the Living Waters Ministry and the Jefferson Neighborhood. This would, you know, bring more opportunities to even more families throughout Hamilton. It's about creating spaces where our youth feel inspired to thrive. We've seen firsthand that the power of soccer in our community through the 17 strong community soccer clinics at Markham Park and also the Jefferson Park over the last few years. These events have shown how soccer can unite people and create togetherness in our neighborhoods. With this mini pitch, we can build on that momentum, offering even more opportunities for growth and collaboration in our community. Hamilton is a city where every child, every family, and every neighborhood matters. This mini pitch is another step forward in that mission, ensuring that soccer and community pride and accessibility is for everyone. To City Council, I ask that you join me in supporting this mission and vision. The FC Cincinnati and all of our community partners and our Hamilton residents, thank you for believing in Hamilton. Together, we are creating more than a soccer field. We're building relationships, opening doors, and fostering a sense of pride and belonging with our residents. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions or hear any feedback at this time.
The expression connection and play just totally does fit in.
Yeah.
I mean, Aiden's got a really good soccer program, Hamilton High has got a good and improving program. So this is just going to be great for our city.
Yeah, I got a really great message from the principal at Riverview this week with her excitement and sharing this with her students and how that some of her students, this is, this might be the only opportunity to really spark some interest and their love. I couldn't have planned it better last week when we were out on the field in that open space. The kids let out for their, like, playtime, their recess, and they just, there's some temporary soccer nets that are set up there, and there was 40 kids just playing, and it was just like the most beautiful thing to see that excitement. And the community knows that this is going to be utilized and loved.
Now, is that natural turf or is that some other kind of turf?
That will be turf. Turf's turf to me, but we will, I could look into that.
That's fine. And lastly, that won't affect that baseball field where it's.
No, absolutely not. So I can go back, thanks to Daniel showing me how to use this. There you can see where the brown is. I believe that is the baseball fields that Mr. Harris was talking about. And then you can, of course, see the other fields over there. I can't, my mind's going blank.
Foundation fields.
Yes, absolutely. Foundation fields there. And where that little blue dot is, there is just, there's a temporary, temporary soccer nets, but then there's an older T-ball area that was there. And we're going to work with Riverview, I hope, to, you know, work with them to allow them to continue to use this, and it's going to be a great partnership.
Field closest to the school, I think, is part of the city school.
Yes, this is on city lot.
On the, on the.
Yes.
Backstop. But I think it's great. It's all going to be lined up so you can use those two fields.
Yes.
But that pitch is amazing. I mean, that's just going to really connect, connect to our city in a lot of symbolic and actual ways.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Vaughn.
I want to thank Sarah. I know she's put a lot of work into this. There were a select number of communities. This is not like everybody gets it. And Sarah's been very diligent in following through and sharing different areas of our city with those interested in supporting this. So I just say thank you.
Yes.
And thank you to the neighborhoods for what you're doing in the Department of Neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Fear.
Sarah, I apologize if you already answered this. How long will the construction take?
Hopefully a month.
Okay. And when is it starting?
Hopefully December 1st, weather permitting and with your approval.
So it had that fence around it, too? I mean, is that?
Yes, that is, and it's all enclosed.
Mr. Mayor. Sarah, I don't, I'm not putting you on the spot, please, but you referred to a mini pitch.
Yes.
Do you have any idea of the dimension that FC Cincinnati talked about?
I know it's smaller than a normal soccer field. I don't have the exact.
I just wanted, you know, and again, I appreciate the space, the playground, the baseball diamond, all of those things that are right there.
Yeah.
The courts and things like that. So I'm glad they can do this because it will be vital for the community, as you said. Build it and they will come, and they're going to come, so.
Absolutely.
Good job, Sarah. Thank you.
Well, thank all of you.
It's also really visible as you come down.
My gosh, with the blue.
Knights Bridge there. It's going to be, that'll be really cool, that whole area over there.
We will plan a huge ribbon cutting where everyone will be invited and will partner with the schools, with Booker T. Washington, and it will really be a great day to celebrate in Hamilton, for sure.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to answer Councilmember Nabb's question. The term sheet says that the mini pitch will be 98 foot long by 44 feet wide.
Nice. Excellent.
How many feet wide?
Thank you.
98 feet.
By 44.
44.
44, okay.
Sounded like four.
Yeah, that would be.
Like a.
Putt putt golf.
That would be a little tight.
That's great.
Great. Thanks for looking that up.
That concludes our presentation.
All right. I think that takes care of it. Is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I accept the motion if the committee, the whole, be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Nabb, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Committee, the whole is closed at 6:36. Now, I accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mabb.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, so that reconvene regular meeting at 6:36. We go to actions pertaining to legislative items and now accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried also at 6:36. So we go into pending legislation. Agenda item number eight, second reading of an ordinance involving our 2024 replacement pages for codified ordinances.
An ordinance approving, adopting, and enacting the 2024 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of Hamilton, Ohio, 1998, and repealing matters in conflict therewith. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mabb.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 10, second reading of emergency ordinance involving Part 17 of our health code.
An emergency ordinance repealing, amending, and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by repealing, amending, and supplementing Part 17 Health Code to repeal codified ordinances that are no longer needed, implement a civil enforcement process, and provide other necessary amendments consistent with existing codified ordinances and state law. Second reading.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mabb.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 10, second reading of emergency ordinance involving Part 17 of the health code. This has to do with sewage systems, various recycling systems, private water system program fees.
An emergency ordinance relative to amending, supplementing, repealing certain sections of Part 17 Health Code to update the sewage treatment systems, gray water recycling systems, and private water system program fees consistent with the Ohio Revised Code. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mabb.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 10, second reading of emergency ordinance involving Part 17 of the health code. This has to do with sewage systems, various recycling systems, private water system program fees.
An emergency ordinance relative to amending, supplementing, repealing certain sections of Part 17 Health Code to update the sewage treatment systems, gray water recycling systems, and private water system program fees consistent with the Ohio Revised Code. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Comments on this one? Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 11, second reading of an ordinance involving solid waste collection, disposable recycling.
An ordinance authorizing the award and execution of an agreement with Rumke of Ohio Incorporated relative to residential and commercial solid waste collection and disposal, including curbside recycling and the lease, operation, and maintenance of the municipal transfer station. Second reading.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mabb.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 12, second reading of an ordinance involving fees for collection of refuse recycling.
An ordinance amending Section 973.15 fees of Chapter 973, collection and recycling of solid waste of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to fees for the collection and recycling of solid waste. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nabb.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Nabb, second by Councilmember Fear. Comments, questions on this one? Roll call vote.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mabb.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We now go to a new legislation, agenda item number 14, first reading of an ordinance involving vacating Woodlawn Avenue Alley A.
An ordinance vacating Woodlawn Avenue Alley A located between Benninghoffen Avenue Alley A and Benninghoffen Avenue, 6th Ward, North Side, City of Hamilton, Ohio. City of Hamilton petitioner, first reading.
We go to agenda item number 15, first reading of an ordinance involving a right-of-way located in the 4th Ward.
An ordinance dedicating 17,463 square feet of property, part lots 507 to 510 and 524 to 526, as right-of-way located on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard between Maple Avenue and Ludlow Street, 4th Ward, City of Hamilton. City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
We now go to agenda item number 16, first reading of a purchase, first reading of an ordinance that involves a purchase and sale agreement in Hamilton City Schools.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement, property conveyances and related actions with Hamilton City School District regarding 2150 Hensley Avenue, parcel number P6451015000014. First reading.
Thank you. Go next to agenda item number 17, two readings of an emergency ordinance involving an exchange agreement involving 646 East Avenue, 218 South 11th.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an exchange agreement, property conveyances and related actions with Gustavo Garcia regarding 646 East Avenue, parcel number P6441047000017, and 218 South 11th Street, parcel number First reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Vice Mayor Nabb, second by Councilmember Lauer. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mabb.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We now go to agenda item number 18, first reading of an ordinance involving a pay range for Neighborhoods Coordinator.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13, 2023, as amended from time to time by reassigning the pay range for the Neighborhoods Coordinator classification. First reading.
We go to agenda item number 20, two reads of emergency ordinance involving issuance of taxable bonds, like 1.5 billion.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the City of Hamilton, Ohio in the maximum principal amount of $1,500,000 for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and declaring an emergency. First of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended, said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
involving an exchange agreement involving six forty-six East Avenue, two eighteen South Eleventh.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an exchange agreement, property conveyances and related actions with Gustavo Garcia regarding six forty-six East Avenue parcel number P six four four one zero four seven zero 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 one seven and two eighteen South Eleventh Street parcel number P six four four one zero three zero 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 six three. First reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Okay, now for the second reading of the emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an exchange agreement, property conveyances and related actions with Gustavo Garcia regarding six forty-six East Avenue parcel number P six four four one zero four seven zero 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 one seven and two eighteen South Eleventh Street parcel number P six four four one zero three zero 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 six three. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted. Seven zero.
We now go to agenda item number eighteen. First reading of an ordinance involving our chapter five forty-two unsolicited written materials and civil penalties.
An ordinance amending, repealing, and supplementing the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by repealing section five twenty-one point one three unsolicited written materials and enacting chapter five forty-two unsolicited written materials to be enforced through civil penalties and amending section nineteen oh five point two five appeals board to add authority to hear appeals to civil citations under said new chapter. First reading.
Go to agenda item number nineteen. First reading of an ordinance involving pay range for neighborhoods coordinator.
An ordinance amending and supplementing schedule A of a city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number E O R twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash one oh six, adopted December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, as amended from time to time by reassigning the pay range for the neighborhoods coordinator classification. First reading.
We go to agenda item number twenty. Two readings of emergency ordinance involving issuance of taxable bonds. It's like one point five billion.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the city of Hamilton, Ohio in the maximum principal amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and declaring an emergency. First of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended. Said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance now.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the city of Hamilton, Ohio in the maximum principal amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number twenty-one. Two readings of emergency ordinance involving issuance of taxable bonds, six hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred fifteen dollars.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the city of Hamilton, Ohio in the maximum principal amount of six hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred fifteen dollars for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
Move the rules be suspended. Said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable bonds of the city of Hamilton, Ohio in the maximum principal amount of six hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred fifteen dollars for the purpose of financing costs of various permanent improvements in the city described herein, authorizing a certificate of award, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion on this one? None. Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted. Seven zero.
Okay, we now go to agenda item number twenty-two. Two readings of emergency ordinance involving some bond anticipation notes.
An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number O R twenty twenty-three dash ten dash eighty-one for the purpose of amending the purpose of the city's general obligation, limited tax, water system improvement, bond anticipation notes, and declaring an emergency. First of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance read a second time by its title.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance now.
An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number O R twenty twenty-three dash ten dash eighty-one for the purpose of amending the purpose of the city's general obligation, limited tax, water system improvement, bond anticipation notes, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Comments on this one? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number twenty-three. Two readings of emergency ordinance involving it looks like some notes cost for certain infrastructure projects and the like.
An emergency ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of various purpose notes in a principal amount not to exceed forty-nine million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of discharging at maturity bond anticipation notes heretofore issued by the city of Hamilton, Ohio to pay the cost of construction, of constructing certain infrastructure projects, authorizing a certificate of award, a note purchase agreement, and a continuing disclosure certificate, authorizing the preparation and delivery of an official statement or similar disclosure document, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such notes, and declaring an emergency. First of two readings.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
The second reading of the emergency ordinance now.
An emergency ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of various purpose notes in the principal amount not to exceed forty-nine million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of discharging at maturity bond anticipation notes heretofore issued by the city of Hamilton, Ohio to pay the cost of constructing certain infrastructure projects, authorizing a certificate of award, a note purchase agreement, and continuing disclosure certificate, authorizing the preparation and delivery of an official statement or similar disclosure document, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such notes, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance now.
An emergency ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation, limited tax, roadway improvement, bond anticipation notes, series twenty twenty-four, in the principal amount of not to exceed three million dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing costs of certain capital improvements to the city's roadways and related infrastructure improvements within the city, authorizing a certificate of award, a note purchase agreement with a continuing disclosure certificate, authorizing the preparation and delivery of an official statement or similar disclosure document, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such notes, and declaring an emergency. First of two readings.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended. Said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Vice, excuse me, Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation, limited tax, roadway improvement, bond anticipation notes, series twenty twenty-four, in the principal amount of not to exceed three million dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing costs of certain capital improvements to the city of Hamilton's, to the city's roadways and related infrastructure improvements within the city, authorizing a certificate of award, a note purchase agreement, and continuing disclosure certificate, authorizing the preparation and delivery of an official statement or similar disclosure document, authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such notes, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted. Seven zero.
Go to agenda item number twenty-five. Two readings of emergency ordinance involving consolidating two note issues.
An emergency ordinance consolidating two note issues and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed fifty-two million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of notes by the city of Hamilton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. First of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance consolidating two note issues and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed fifty-two million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of notes by the city of Hamilton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. A second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Ryan. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted. Seven zero.
We now go to agenda item number twenty-six. Resolution involving a successor collective bargain agreement. Ask me.
A resolution approving the terms and conditions of a successor collective bargaining, bargaining agreement negotiated between the city of Hamilton, Ohio, and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, A F S C N E, Local three one six nine, A F L dash C I O, authorizing and directing the execution of said collective bargain agreement.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
We now go to agenda item number twenty-seven. That's a resolution involving a public county, Butler County Public Defender Commission.
A resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Hamilton, Ohio, the Butler County Public Defender Commission, and the Butler County Board of Commissioners relative to reimbursement of appointed legal counsel to represent indigent defendants in the Hamilton Municipal Court for the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance or the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
I'll go to agenda item number twenty-eight. Resolution involving side lot projects, sixteen oh five Parkamo Avenue.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property on our side lot, sixteen oh five Parkamo Avenue.
Mayor.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Ryan. Comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Mab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven zero.
Okay, now I'll bring this to the audience of the city manager, newly sworn in member of the bar. Take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to address two things. First, I'd like to address the recent notifications that were sent to some of our water customers. These notifications are mandated by the Ohio EPA by all water systems, including the city of Hamilton, and these notifications were sent primarily to address lead service lines. Lead service lines have existed for decades. They were widely used until they were banned in nineteen eighty-six. However, when these lines were installed, there were no records kept of their locations, which is why we've embarked on what I'll call a three-part effort, and that effort is to locate, educate, and eliminate. Locate where these lines actually exist, educate those who may be impacted, and providing them the most accurate information, and then eliminating those lines by working with our local, state, and federal partners to develop a plan to replace those lines. I also want to be clear about what is unchanged, and that is the source of our water, how we treat our water, and our commitment to delivering safe and clean water. The source of our water has maintained, we have maintained that through the Great Miami Valley Buried Aquifer. Our treatment process has remained unchanged since nineteen seventy-two, and our commitment to providing safe and clean water to our residents and customers is unwavering. Secondly, I'd like to just give a thank you to our infrastructure team, particularly Donnie Watts, Joe Schlifter, and Chris Napier, along with all our line workers, for the holiday lights that they've worked so diligently to put up downtown here. They're not quite finished. Goal is to be complete by Thanksgiving, and they're ahead of schedule. The weather's been very cooperative, but the lights look amazing, and appreciate all their efforts. Thank you.
Audience, city council.
Mr. Mayor.
And by Ryan.
Friday, we welcomed our passenger rail engineering firm, ACOM, to the city. We had a nice little introductory meeting. I know Councilwoman Vaughn, Mayor, the Vice Mayor were there for this. It was a good discussion, asked some really good questions, and looking forward to watching these guys around town here in the next couple of weeks. So if you see them, say hi. I will do my best to maybe get a timeline together, and if anybody wants to go, just tag along and see what they're doing around the tracks, taking pictures and measurements and all that stuff, I'll let you guys know. But it was a really good presentation, and thank you to Mike Gurr for getting that ready to go. It is exciting. They will have the study done in February, and they will be coming back to council to present that to us during, you know, a presentation time during the meetings. So that being said, Dan Bates and I are taking a few of us, hopefully, hopefully more, to the State House next Wednesday. I highly encourage council if you are able to go. I would love to have you up there. We are going to be talking with Representative Cruthers, Senator Lang. I just got confirmation from Representative Creach this afternoon. He's going to be there. The president of all Board of Ohio is also going to be in attendance to support our message to Columbus and the State General Assembly on how important it is to bring Amtrak to Hamilton. So if you guys can sign up, please let Dan know and bring a friend. This is going to be a good trip. It's our meeting, and we are taking our voices to Columbus to be heard. So very important. I also want to recognize Marnie Durham from Butler Tech. Really appreciate the letter of support for Amtrak and the idea you have to include Amtrak to be a part of AmHub. So really appreciate Butler Tech stepping up and fighting for Hamilton. It really, really means a lot. So thank you. Other than that, I want to thank Mike Farmer and the Butler County Veteran Service Commission for putting on a very touching and tribute ceremony on Sunday evening at the fairgrounds honoring our veterans. Thank you. Thank you.
I want to add one thing, first off, Dan, am I signed up to go? I think I am, aren't I? All right. We talked about connection soccer can do, and sports can connect people, but Amtrak can also connect people. Butler Tech is an educational institution, Miami University, it can connect students to, to places they've never been there before, but also Amtrak might want to look at some of our people to employ, to help solve problems, and that's what appeared in Marnie's letter, so thank you very much for that. I just want to say that, as a result of you saying that, so thank you. Okay. You want to say something, Tim, don't you?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Please do. And tailgating on a little bit of what, what Councilman Ryan just shared and our city manager shared, on this past Sunday, we, the city of Hamilton Veterans Hall of Fame honored 21 new recipients to join the, the Hall of Fame. Those are all Hamiltonians that, that went away to service and/or a civilian that have done extraordinary things in their life since they returned. The contributions to our city, making it a welcoming place, making it a better place, there were just wonderful awards that were presented to soldiers, some with us, some posthumously, but for their valor, for what they contributed, some giving their lives to our city, or to our country, I should say, and again, all of them city residents, so we're honored to, to enjoin them. We hold that on the Sunday before Veterans Day every year. This past Sunday's event, there were about 260 people present to honor the 21 recipients that were with us on Sunday, so we'll be taking applications for the Veterans Hall of Fame as we move into 2025. Tying into that, Craig also mentioned in his comments that the decorations, holiday decorations are going up, which means all of the veterans banners throughout the city are coming down on purpose through the end of this week and into next week. The ROTC cadets at Hamilton High will clean all 355 or so banners, they'll be dried, rolled up and put away in bins during the wintertime, and we're already receiving applications for new banners, new heroes banners. This past month, I have fielded well over 100 applications. I had a lady call me last night from Galveston, Texas, and said, "Mr. Nab, I'd like to have a banner made for one of my relatives." So, near and far, far and wide, that our city is just doing wonderful things for our veteran heroes, and we'll be continuing the application process through the city of Hamilton, through the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, Hamilton Community Foundation, due in February, so there's no need to rush, we've got plenty of time to pull the application, the discharge papers of the veteran, a picture of the veteran, and, and then of course, the payment to the community foundation for the banner to be created. Thanks very much.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lauer.
I want to congratulate Baden High School on another great run, all the athletes, it was a great year, especially from where we started. It was a great experience for all those coaches as well as kids. I do want to reach out and congratulate Arby Crouch and his football team this year, what an amazing two-year run that they have had. I was, I thought they had it, I thought they were gonna take Princeton pretty easily. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, but an amazing run by some great kids and a great coaching staff, and I appreciate that. I think it bodes well for Hamilton, and it is great advertisement for our city schools, and hopefully it's something that is, something else that attracts people to come and live,